Gentlemen, welcome to the August 26, 2024 meeting, Sandusky City Commission. We will begin our meeting, or before our meeting, I should say, we will have an invocation offered by Mr. Pajali, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if before I do the invocation, we could have a moment of silence for Commissioner Frank Valli, who passed away. Oh. Praise God. Lord, thank you for another day of life. Please guide us as we do the people's work this evening. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Myers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fargo?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Mr. Brady, someone care to make a motion to excuse Mr. Brady's presence?
So moved. Second.
Then a motion second. A lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioner Pajali, I thank you for reminding us, or telling us about Mr. Valli's passing. He was a delightful person to interact with. I did not know that he had passed. And I appreciate your bringing that to our attention. A little irascible, a lot of fun, very knowledgeable, very passionate about these things. He was a good guy.
He always had a lot of energy.
He did.
Yeah.
Commissioners, we have a set of minutes from the August 12 meeting. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm with you. We accept the minutes of the August 12 meeting and dispense with a reading.
Second.
Then a motion at second. A lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We have a proclamation that Commissioner Crable is going to present tonight, Alzheimer's Paint the Town Purple. And I understand that Donna Brettz is with us and may be accepting this proclamation. Ms. Brettz, would you like to come forward?
Excuse me. Do you want me to go out there, or do you want me to stay here?
However, you think you can do. If you can get the mic over there, that probably is better.
Yes.
To get the, just tip your mic up that way.
Hi. What has Alzheimer's disease is a progressive, degenerative disease of the brain and the most common form of dementia that affects not only a person's memory, but also the judgment and reasoning abilities. And close to 300,000 Ohio citizens are currently living with Alzheimer's or another dementia. And it affects more than 6 million Americans. And whereas, Ohio is projected to see a 13.6% increase in cases by 2025, and Medicaid costs of caring for individuals living with Alzheimer's is more than $2.5 billion, with an anticipated 16% increase in Medicaid expenditure by 2025. And whereas, another 600,000 Ohioans are unpaid caregivers, and half of those living with the disease have yet to be diagnosed. And caregiving for individuals with Alzheimer's disease often takes an enormous toll on family members. Caregivers themselves often suffer more stress, depression, and health problems than caregivers of people with other illnesses. And whereas, Alzheimer's disease is not a normal part of aging. It is a progressive brain disease without any way to prevent or slow its progression, and is failing. And whereas, we recognize the significant role the Alzheimer's Association Northwest Ohio Chapter plays in offering diverse educational and supportive programming and services. Caregiver support groups, professional training, respite care, and financial assistance to ease the burden to families and caregivers while educating the community and increasing awareness of Alzheimer's disease and other forms of dementia by early detection and diagnosis, advocacy, and research. And now therefore, I and the rest of the City Commission do hereby proclaim recognition of September 2024 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month in Sandusky. And I urge all residents and merchants to paint the town purple during August 29 through September 7, and encourage all residents to wear purple on Friday, September 6. Everyone is invited to participate in Erie Shores, Sandusky, Ohio Walk to End Alzheimer's on Saturday, September 7 at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We really appreciate everything that the city does. This is Pam Brombaugh. She is our chairwoman this year, and Kay is another committee member. So the city does a great job, and we really appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you Commissioner Crable for presenting the proclamation. Do we have a public, we do not have a public chair. Okay. Time for audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any item, on any items of agenda, I'm sorry, on any of the agenda items, please step to the microphone, give us your names and your address, and share with us your thoughts about particular agenda items.
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Thank you, Mr. President. The Commissioner's ahead. My comments and questions pertaining to item number C, which is the increase in EMS fees. Did a little math over the last five years, the average was 5,357 EMS calls. If you just multiply that by the bare minimum, which is currently $430 per transport, which is the very lowest amount, there's also a, or advanced life support and advanced life support two, but I'm just using the top, the very cheapest run. We're looking at $11,500,000 and change collected over the last five years. In 2023, there were 5,068 calls, and doing the math again with the lowest $430 fee charge. That's over $2.2 million at the minimum. So my question would be, is how much of that yearly collection goes actually into the EMS fund for equipment purchases versus the amount that goes into other accounts that are not associated with the EMS fund for equipment? I'll tell you one little story. I had a family member about two months ago, he fell out the back end of his pickup truck in Sandusky. He was transported to Fire and Rescue Hospital, and after everything was all said and done, he had to pay $200 out of pocket. And he is on Social Security disability. So if there's not something in our code or charter or whatever that we can come up with a mechanism to forgive some of those out-of-pocket fees based on income availability, if we can do that. I know the hospitals do that with their care, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, whatever pays a certain amount based on income, they will waive or set up some kind of a payment plan for that. So that's something I would, you know, perhaps the City Commission could look into that and add it into this new legislation. The last one real quick is the Sailing Club submerged land lease, which is on the agenda tonight, which is item C, item D, I believe.
B, I think.
B. Thank you very much. $18,000. My question is, how much of that $18,000 do we either send back to the Sailing Club or actually forgive? Because I know that they have some kind of a program to keep, teach kids how to sail. And I think that in the past few years, we've given money back to the Sailing Club from that $18,000. I would like to know if there's, if we're still doing that and what the figures is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger. Anyone else present wishing to address any of the agenda items tonight? If not, then we have several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion at second. Discussion. A lot of objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Commissioners, you have on the agenda three items that are part of the consent agenda. Would any of you like to have any of those removed and replaced, placed on the regular agenda? If not, then Ms. Myers, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Item A, which is a second reading, is approval to amend Chapter 961 of the Codified Ordinances for EMS charges. Item B, approval of payment for sailing club submerged land lease to ODNR. Item C, approval of ERI Meadowbrook Sidewalk Project, change order one, and final to Smith paving.
Commissioners, having heard the three ordinances that are part of the consent agenda, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items, A, on second reading, B and C, under ordinance accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion at second. There were two questions asked about the consent agenda, and I thought both were important and should be addressed. First one, I'll just take them in the order of the consent agendas. I am unaware of us giving any money back to the Sandusky Sailing Club. My understanding is that the state charges us for the submerged land lease, we pay that, we essentially pass that on to the Sailing Club, although we front it and they reimburse it. Can anyone address that?
I can. That is correct. So the $18,104.36 for the submerged land lease will be billed to the Sailing Club. They reimburse the city at 100%. So we will recoup all the funds that were on the agenda tonight to approve for the submerged land lease. There is some sort of agreement where we do set aside funds. If the Sailing Club comes to us and asks for reimbursement for scholarships for sailing, there is something available. In the recent future, I have not seen any requests from the Sailing Club for the scholarship dollars, but there is something out there for scholarship dollars.
Okay, thank you. And then what about the EMS, the funds that we receive from insurance companies and the state government for Medicare, Medicaid calls, EMS calls? Who can address the destination or use of those funds? Is that you, Ms. Reader, or Chief?
I think either one of us could probably address that. The EMS funds that we collect on, as Mr. Schwanger said, 2.2 million, that might be what we would get each year if we collected 100%. We really only collect from year to year between about 55 and 60%, 60% if we're lucky. So it's usually about a million dollars that we collect. The first $400,000 goes into the general fund every year. This year, for instance, we purchased an ambulance that was $294,000. So that came out after the $400,000 to the general fund. Currently, I believe, Mrs. Reader said, we're at $52,000 for balance for 2024 so far. We also use a portion of that to pay for our dispatch fees, our fleet maintenance, and parts for our vehicles, too. So whatever's left after that point, at this point, we are using to, you know, purchase new equipment and make capital improvements at the stations.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Any other questions or comments regarding consent agenda items? Mr. Waddington?
What's our current run line per year now? I know it keeps going up.
We did about 5,900 calls in 2023. That's fire and EMS calls. A few years back, we were up to 24, or 6,400, but it usually rotates, stays around 6,000 the past few years.
Mr. Chair.
Chief, if, so talking, Mr. Schwanger was talking about someone potentially who financially maybe can't afford, and maybe they're not on Medicaid, or maybe they're not on Medicare. How does that work if they can't pay? Do we continue to try to collect? How's that work?
The billing company deals with most of that. Medicaid will pay their portion, and then depending on what other kind of medical plans they have, personally, they might get some more. There's a certain amount of write-offs that happen. They do work payment plans with people. And if they do not get on a payment plan, or they don't make an effort to pay over time, that's when we would send them to collections after that point. But as long as they're, as long as they're making a good faith effort to pay, then it doesn't get sent to collections.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Now, Ms. Myers, would you call the question, or poll the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Yes. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinances, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Those ordinances are adopted. Ms. Myers, would you present item number one, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code, Title I, Zoning Administration, Chapter 1107, Definitions, and Title V, Additional Zoning Requirements, Chapter 1145, Supplemental Areas and Height Regulations, Section 1145.17, Landscape Features and Yard Structures, Chapter 1149, Site Plan Review and Off-Street Parking, Section 1149.10, Illumination of Parking Areas, and Title VII, Subdivision Regulations, Chapter 1183, Required Improvements and Design Criteria, Section 1183.06, Streets of the Codified Ordinance in Manner and Way Specifically Set forth here and below, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Commissioners, having heard this communication and proposed legislation, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Coons?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules as contained in accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Second.
There's been a motion at second. Discussion. And with the commission's indulgence, I would appreciate it if Ms. Blair, who is here and is our chief planner, might step to the microphone and give the commission an overview and the public an overview of what it is that's being proposed and why.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray. The lighting ordinance that we brought forward is kind of colloquially referred to as dark sky friendly lighting. It's something that we've heard through the last couple of years from a few commissioners and planning commissioners as important. Many other cities near the water especially are passing similar types of legislation. The idea is that if we continue to develop and we continue to shine light into the sky, we will eventually not be able to see as many stars, which is a public good. It also can interrupt migratory bird patterns if there's excessive light in cities. And Sandusky is a very important part of the migratory pattern of warblers and other birds that every year. Also, lighting can be a nuisance to neighbors. It can shine excessively upon neighboring properties, and we didn't really have a great way to define what that looked like and how to bring that forward. The Planning Commission has actually been in practice in regulating lighting for quite some time through conditions on site plan approvals. So what we've brought forward is a very simple ordinance that puts in place definitions to match what they've been practicing for the last couple of years. It also gives us the opportunity, when we do staff approvals, when we review single-family homes and garages and construction like that beyond the purview of Planning Commission, that we can be consistent across commercial and residential properties with new construction. So this ordinance is only for new construction when we're doing site plan review from the zoning perspective, that we're looking at the fixture design of new fixtures. It's very simple to adhere to. There's thousands of compliant fixtures out there, and we're just going to take a look at that. So become part of the site plan submission that any exterior lighting that would show staff the fixture, and we have a clear definition of what that looks like so we can get those approvals as speedily as we get all of our approvals through.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Commissioners, questions or comments for Ms. Blair or others?
Mr. Chairman.
Pajali.
I know, at first, I wasn't an advocate of this, but we've had numerous, numerous discussions at the Planning Commission, and I was convinced that this is the proper way to go. I know Mr. Zuloff will be very happy because he talks about light pollution and dark sky lighting all the time. So I think this is a good thing, and I think it'll, moving it forward is something that a lot of people will be happy about.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I went through the process, and to be quite candid, I didn't find it to be burdensome at all. It's just a matter of, you know, when you go into the planning process and you're thinking about parking lot lighting, or, you know, ground lighting or what have you, that you go into it, you know, with your eyes wide open, as it were. And probably the biggest part of it is simply the choice of fixtures. Sometimes there's a little bit of engineering, you know, the spacing between lights and things like that. I think that the other part that's not mentioned here is the impact on neighbors. I'm sure some of us have had the experience of having a neighbor who decides to light their parking lot or light the backside of their building. And to be quite candid, you didn't have to put up drapes in your own residence just to, you know, close out that, that light that's coming in the bedroom and keeping you awake at night. And perhaps I'm hyperbolizing that a little bit, but I think we do have to respect each other, our neighbors, and to the extent that we can choose light fixtures that do not throw a great deal of light off onto neighbors, I think that that's a, the neighborly thing to do. So into my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Crable. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman. Just one other thing. I know what popped into my mind was what about safety issues if places aren't well lit? Ms. Blair had a slide that was a garage where there was, was light, and you couldn't, you couldn't really see much from the glare. And then the next slide with the dark sky lighting that was imposed, there was somebody standing right there. Yeah. That you wouldn't have seen with the lighting the way it is now. So I thought that was interesting.
Very interesting. Other questions or comments? Ms. Blair, I really appreciate you bringing this legislation forward, and I know it's been a long process. It's something that I had wanted to see us adopt for a long time, for all of the reasons that you mentioned. It does have an impact on the migratory birds. Crable's point, it has a big impact on neighbors and our ability to sleep and stress levels. It has a big impact on, we are a boating community, and we have a lot of boats out there. And you cannot find the buoys out in the bay if you're with all the light in the background at times. That makes something of a hazard. So really appreciate your bringing this forward. I know it's been a long haul, but thank you. Ms. Myers, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is adopted. Mr. Waddington, we're not going to make a record tonight. We just missed that by a few minutes already, so.
Excuse me?
You seem like you're in a hurry.
I was going to share my Mike Zuloff story. Two tall black coffees, he stopped me in front of Vida, and I sat him on my truck. I might as well have had a bag of ice by the time he got done talking about lights.
A very.
I'll leave it at that.
A very enthusiastic and knowledgeable member of our community. We appreciate his service on the Planning Commission. Ms. Myers, would you present item number two, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed amending Part 5, General Offenses Code, Chapter 3531, nuisances generally, by the adoption of the new Section 531.18, Light as a Nuisance, and amending Section 531.99, penalty of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect under the suspension of rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt this ordinance under Section 13 of the City Code.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Ms. Blair, just confirm for us, this is part and parcel of the earlier legislation that we just adopted. This is the mechanism to make it happen if it doesn't happen voluntarily.
Yes, this is a companion piece that is best practice for enforcement. We, it will allow the police force to enforce excessive lighting glare in neighbors' windows after administrative staff is not in the building, if there's anything that's not. Right now, the zoning code just says that light cannot be of excessive brightness or cause glare, and you might suspect that those issues come up typically after hours during the night and not during the day.
Thank you. And has been often told to me that the, the objective of the planning, of the planning department and code enforcement is we want, we want compliance, not enforcement.
Absolutely.
And that's why we do call them code compliance officers as opposed to enforcement. So not all, not always true in other cities, so thank you for that. Commissioners, questions or comments regarding the ordinance? Ms. Myers, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
That ordinance is adopted. Ms. Myers, would you present item number three, please?
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Camp Street and West Forest Drive Utility Relocation Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution on suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 13 of the City Charter.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, I'm sorry, fourteen.
Second.
There's been a motion at second. Discussion. Ms. Klein, what are you up to this time?
Yeah, so this is really the first construction project that's coming out of the South Side Neighborhood Plan. We are resurfacing Camp Street next year, so we wanted to make sure we got in there and did the sewer and water line and did everything that needed to be done. There's not that much water line work. It's really just the connections for the residences that currently go out back. So with, based on the funding sources that we have available for this project, we also wanted to make sure that we added another block or two of that area. Unfortunately, it made the most sense to add West Forest rather than East Forest to the project strictly because we were going to be proceeding with Churchwell Park as well. And with the splash pad there, we wanted to make sure that the water line work was going to be done prior to Churchwell Park being done. So this is kind of a, a project that we're splitting into two phases. The first phase is going to be Camp Street and West Forest for the utility relocations. And then the second phase is going to be Parkview and then North and South Forest as well as, as East Forest. So what we're actually doing is when these neighborhoods were built, the sewer, water lines, gas lines were all built behind the residences. They were built kind of in easements, I guess you would say, and they've been existing that way for years. They're undersized, they don't have the capacity that they need, and they're very hard to access, especially with all the overgrowth that's out there in the trees and everything else. Plus, it's just not a good circumstance when you're trying to get into somebody's backyard to maintain a sewer line or lift a manhole. So what we're doing with this project is on those, those streets that I mentioned, we're relocating the utilities into the roadway, which means we also have to bring the sewer and water connections for all the private residences, redirect those out the front of the house. Luckily, these houses, most of them, if not all of them, have crawl spaces, so that makes it a lot easier. You can intercept them above ground rather than trying to dig below foundations. So it does make it a possibility. The challenge is getting everybody, all the property owners, to respond in a timeframe that will allow us to do the project. So we're gonna, we've reached out to them all twice, and we're going to keep reaching out. We've got about a third of responses allowing them, allowing us to move forward, and we're going to push as fast as we can to get the other 20 to 21 property owners to agree to allow us to do that work. And we, and I'm sorry, and we do want to make sure that this project gets under contract before the end of this year because of the ARPA funding that's associated with it.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Ms. Klein. Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Hearing none. Ms. Myers, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the resolution? And now on the resolution?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
That resolution is adopted. Ms. Myers, would you present item number four, please?
It is requested a resolution be passed authorizing the submission of an application by the city manager for financial assistance and to enter into a project agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission in order to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, authorizing, authorized by Chapter 164 of the Ohio Revised Code for the West Monroe Street Rehabilitation Project, Camp Street to Decatur Street, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules under Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Ms. Myers, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
That resolution is adopted. Would you present item number five, please, Ms. Myers?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with Lake Erie Diving Incorporated of Painsville, Ohio, for the inspection of the 48-inch outfall and structure from the wastewater treatment plant, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Coons?
Move for approval of this ordinance under Item 5, under suspension of the rules with Section, in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Not a job for someone with claustrophobia, that's for sure. Ms. Myers, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Yes. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a Bullseye Digital Fire Extinguisher Training System from Phoenix Safety Outfitter of Upper Arlington, Ohio, for the fire department, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bajali?
I would move to approve this, to adopt this ordinance under Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Ms. Myers, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
That ordinance is adopted, with our thanks to the Mylander Foundation. Ms. Myers, would you present item number seven, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase an FCS Tricot Touch Pro Correlator and Pro Leak Noise Amplification Package from Flow Networks Incorporated, doing business as 540 Technology of Selensgrove, Pennsylvania, for the Water Distribution Division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wantington?
I move for adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Ms. Myers, pull the commissioners on the motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
That ordinance is adopted. And Ms. Myers, would you present the last item of regular agenda business, item number eight, please?
It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring a 25,000-pound vehicle lift from Forward Manufacturer Company as unnecessary and unfit for city use pursuant to Section 25 of the City Charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase a Challenger Lifts 4300 Series vehicle lift from Lift Now Automotive Equipment Incorporated of Yorktown Heights, New York, for the Fleet Maintenance Division, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Crable?
I move approval of item number eight, and that it take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
The motion and second, discussion. One thing I'll say is that in the time that Mr. Wantington and I have served on the, on the city commission, we've watched, and Mr. Brady was here tonight, of course, we've, we've watched a remarkable improvement in the overall quality of the city's equipment, such that the, the people who work for the city, work for the residents, are able to do their jobs more effectively and safely. This is one more piece in that puzzle. When, Mr. Wantington, when you and I were first on, back in the aughts, we were, we were literally holding some trucks together with baling wire. And we're in a better place today, and we get, or we allow good people to provide better service because we take care of that equipment, and I think that's a legacy.
Mr. Chairman, you sparked my memory. I even jumped a pickup truck on the West End.
Yeah.
If you remember, that was tough times.
And we spend, we spend the money judiciously. I believe all the department heads are responsible in terms of their requests, and if they weren't, they wouldn't get past Mr. Orzak. But, you know, it is important to have good equipment to do the right work, do the work the right way. Ms. Myers, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
That ordinance is adopted, and we will turn to our city manager for his report. Mr. Orzak?
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, and staff. Excuse me. I had a late add-on, but I'm gonna read it first because I think it's important. We're going to have the cooling shelter open tomorrow at New Jerusalem Church. Ms. Grant, or Ms. Gilson notified me this afternoon. The shelter's gonna be open from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Our transit system and the police department will provide transportation if anybody needs anything, so stay tuned for future dates if it becomes necessary. But tomorrow for sure, we'll have the cooling shelter open. I have a donation from Construction Equipment and Supply has made an in-kind donation with a value of $777 for the rental of a boom lift used to install the balancing sculptures by Jersey Kudzora in Sandusky Park. The Sandusky Education Foundation has donated $500 to support the remaining balance of the lift rental, which equals fuel costs at $81, and supports maintenance of the sculptures in the coming years. Maintenance includes cable replacement as needed on an annual basis, so I get a motion to accept those donations.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We were notified late last week of some excellent news of our bond ratings and notes. So the city recently underwent a Moody's rating process prior to issuing the debt for the Justice Center Rehabilitation Project and the various purpose notes. Moody's reassured and retained the city's stable A1 rating for the bonds and issued the highest rating attainable of MiG-1 for our notes. The city awarded the $10 million Justice Center bonds for 25 years to Bernardi Securities Incorporated at a net interest cost of 4.132558. She put that on there, and she didn't think I'd read it. The $4,785,000 Various Purpose Note issuance was awarded to Piper Sandler &amp; Company at a net interest cost of 3.313. I'd like to thank Ms. Reader. I know she was doing a lot of cheerleading for the city as we went through that process, so kudos there.
Thank you.
Construction, this is for Public Works, construction, construction and punchless items at the Justice Center should be wrapped up in the next few weeks, with furniture being installed the first two weeks of September. After IT has all the workstations operational, the facility will be turned over for use by the courts, the prosecutor, and Sandusky Police. Ribbon cutting and open house are forthcoming sometime in October, and we'll let the public and commission obviously know those dates. Reminder to all residents and property owners to please complete the water service line inventory on our website at www.cityofsandusky.com/waterlines. ODOT has scheduled diamond grinding of the concrete on Mylan Road and Sycamore Line to begin Tuesday, September 3rd. The same construction zones that were set at the beginning of August will be set up again, excuse me, again that week. And for Community Development, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, the CAPER, for program year 2023 is now available online at City Hall, the Sandusky Library, and by request. Public comments will be received on the document through September 6, 2024. For more information, contact Nicole Groey and Community Development at 419-627-5730. A public hearing will occur September 9 at 5:00 p.m. at the Sandusky City Commission meeting. That concludes my report for the evening. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak. Questions or comments for the city manager? To those in the public and those in the room and at the desk here, at the table, the CAPER, used to be called the CAFER, I have a hard time getting my, myself to change the name. Fascinating document. The supplement to it just contains a wealth of, of information. I, I'm sure, Ms. Reader, you have a role, and your office has a role in collecting all of that, but obviously all the department heads contribute a lot of information. It is a really great document to review. I mean, it's a little nerdy, but it's, it's pretty interesting. Well, Swann, you gotta be a little nerdy at this job, right?
Yeah.
That's how it is. No questions or comments for the city manager? Then we will turn to audience participation. Oh, I'm sorry, a little rusty at this, I forget. New business, Commissioners, new business.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wantington?
It's that time of year again for the volunteer awards for community members, and Mr. Bajali's gonna help me again this year, along with our city commission clerk, Ms. Myers. Over the next few weeks, I guess two or three weeks, if you have any ideas of someone that you think's worthy of it, I think this will be what, our fourth year now coming up? Yeah, our fourth year coming up. If you have someone that's worthy, contact one of us or Ms. Myers, and then we usually get a good group every year. So far, I think we've had a real good group. But I think someone that takes time to volunteer in our community, or we, someone mentioned me, like maybe possibly one or two service folks, like a woman or man that served in the service, maybe like Vietnam or past wars and that, that they should be recognized too, so we might include that. It's just an idea that we're tossing around, so. I put a lot on Mr. Bajali, but he can handle, he's got big shoulders.
Well, thank you both for spearheading that effort. It's been a good addition. Other items of new business?
Any old business?
Any items, funny you should mention that, I was gonna turn there next. Any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Crable?
Yeah. In the, in the meetings, the preliminary meetings to our commission meetings, our city manager, Mr. Orzak, shared with, with us some information that I thought was quite fascinating. I bring this up because, you know, here very shortly, we're going to be taking a look at what we want to do as far as the rec center is concerned, and one of the, one of the questions that has been out there, and, you know, I've thought about from time to time as well, was, you know, is building a brand-new building the best use? Are we going to get as much mileage out of it in terms of new programming for citizens, children, middle-aged seniors? Are we going to get the, the biggest bang for our buck? And I don't know the answer to that entirely. I know prior commission has probably considered this, but the current commission, I don't think we've really had an opportunity to discuss it. But, having said all of that, Mr. Orzak shared some interesting information with us about the process that had been gone through with the decision to locate the Justice Center at the old City Hall as opposed to other sites. And I would ask if Mr. Orzak could share that maybe with the public and with the entire commission?
Sure. Just to start out with, there wasn't an open records or open meeting violation, it was just with Mr. Coons and Mr. Crable, so no, no one thinks we had all the commission at the meeting. So I was asked a question, and so basically, when we went down the path of the recreation center, and we, we had a consultant on board, and Colleen and her staff, and everybody was working towards a new rec center, the, there was three sites or four sites that were, I think, were determined. One was the American Cran site, one was J.C. Park, one was Mills, and I think Jackson was the other one. And ultimately, the American Cran site, because we have control of the site, we own the site, was chosen, and we promoted that to the community. We told the community that we were gonna deliver a rec center and programming with what we had heard with basketball courts, a walking track, equipment workout area, and also rooms for yoga and zumba, or whatever, whatever you want to call those, you know, those type of rooms. So, so my message initially was that we have absolutely sold the public that we're gonna have a new facility, where it's gonna be located, and I don't think that the commission or, or myself should change that at this time. I did explain to Mr. Crable and Mr. Coons, however, that we do have to live within a budget that every project has. You know, there's all kinds of budget, or budget and projects that you've experienced already, and we've, we've done through the years. And the Justice Center was one that Mr. Klein and I had lived through for, I think, eight years or however many it's been now. And we had initially looked at the PNC site on Washington, we looked at the American Cran site, we, I think there was another site that we looked at, and ultimately, we, the American Cran site was selected back then. And once we started evaluating that and got numbers, it was in the $17 million range to build a brand-new facility, and our need for square footage at the time was at least 33,000 square feet, and we would only be able to build 29,000 square feet for $17 million, which was, didn't make any sense. We were already in a, needing 33,000. So, we reset and looked at PNC again, spent a lot of diligence on that, that site for, I don't know, a year or two. And that site didn't work out, and then with the City Hall move, we re-looked at the old And then with the City Hall move, we relooked at the old City Hall, 222 Meg Street. We did an analysis on it, and we delivered a, or we're delivering a very fine product, a project with a budget that's within our budget and 41,000 square feet, which, you know, is important for growth and that. So my point to the commissioner was that if we get into a situation where we get numbers that are astronomical and it doesn't make sense to build a brand-new one, we might have to reevaluate it. So it's just something to think about. But obviously, we're committed at this point to building a new facility. We have a programming meeting tomorrow with all of the rec staff to start that process. And what we can include, we want to get that information to all the commissioners prior to selecting the criteria architect. So we're going to be working diligently on that in the coming weeks and month to see what programs can be housed there, what the square footage is going to be needed and necessary, and then go on from there. But it's definitely a long process, going to be a process. I know Commissioner Waddington and Commissioner Murray have been through this whole battle before, so. But we'll evaluate it. We're not going to make any decisions to, that are going to be impactful to the public and the dollars that are entrusted upon us. That's not going to make sense, so.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak.
Yeah, just to distill this down to a really simple form, plus or minus now. The City Hall site enabled the city to get roughly 40% more square footage for 40% fewer dollars. And that's, again, I'm just taking 40% as a rough kind of figure. But I think it's an interesting lesson that we really have to evaluate, you know, options thoroughly. And I found it to be an interesting analysis that our city manager was able to provide. But again, the simple form is we got 40% more for 40% fewer dollars.
Yeah, it was an interesting process because we started out thinking that the rec center, that building the Justice Center at Meg Street was going to be very expensive and that it did not have infrastructure that was going to really allow us to bolt a new building on top of that. And I think it just goes to show that every facility is different, every, you know, the rec center may need a new construction, may need new construction as opposed to renovating an old building for reasons that I don't know because I'm not a contractor or an architect. We did go through a process that was pretty detailed, and I don't know, Mr. Klein, you would probably have that study that we did when we were looking at the different sites. Maybe it wasn't you, maybe it's someone else, but I don't know if that's been circulated among the new commissioners. It would be probably helpful to see that as just a starting point. And, you know, if we don't, if we don't get a rec, a new rec center for the budget that we have in mind, then we're not going to break the budget. We're going to look at other options.
Yeah, I think, I just think it's, you know, something that we've been entrusted with, you know, by the public to make the very best decisions and get the biggest bang for our buck. One of the things that I've quietly been watching is that I think that there are very high expectations for the number of people that can be accommodated in the new rec center, the number, the type of programming, the breadth of programming that, you know, is expected. And, you know, I look at where we are and I say, boy, we really need to get this right as commissioners and as a community. So I look forward to the conversation that, you know, will transpire. And yes, I very much would love, speaking just for myself, I would love to see whatever study had been done previously.
Well, I have said many, many, many times over the years, as we've talked about the rec center, that the problem, the challenge that we face from simply putting the idea forward is that it has many different visions in people's minds.
Yes.
It cannot be, we cannot afford to be all things for all people. We do have to make finite choices because we've got finite dollars.
Right.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kuntz.
I just wanted to add a couple of comments related to the rec center because I tend to be where John, where he is as it relates to, you know, what the people say they want. But at the same time, as commissioners, we always have to think about the money that we have available. And so when he, when he gave the example about the Justice Center, and I said, wait a minute, the Justice Center is less square footage and it costs roughly between 10 and 11 million, or something like that? And isn't it about 11 million that we have for the rec center and it's more square footage? So what are we really going to get? So I started thinking about that. So that was a good example. But at the same time, the flip side of that is the logistics, right? Because we've entered into these conversations where now we've set in stone the fact that, yeah, we'll have a swimming pool over at the high school, right? And I liked the idea of the swimming pool being that close to the rec center, right? Then we have also the conversations that went into effect regarding the tennis courts, right? And the tennis courts being over there, which is logistically a good thing, right? And so now, if we do have to go somewhere else, now we have to take all of that into consideration logistically. What do we do now? Right? Because those were, you know, in my mind, those were good combinations to have going on at that time and that location. But how does that change that? What will it mean? Right? It's, you know, some more conversation has to be had, but we have to get the bang for the buck, right? Who knows what that would cost in terms of that square footage when you're only talking about $11 million, right? When you spend $11 million to refurbish, and it's beautiful, right? But what will we really get?
Mr. Crable.
You know, one of the things that's missing in our conversation, and I really hope that between Mr. Whirling and other staff we get soon, is what are we looking at in a way of programming? You know, what, what does, what do all those components look like? And what does that require in terms of, you know, the physical square footage and facilities that are going to be required? So, you know, I'm looking forward to that part of the conversation as well.
Other items of new business, commissioners? Old business, I said, we're on old business. Monkey business is also welcome.
One more, Mr. Commissioner.
Well, not monkey business. Yeah, please.
Mr. Chair, one more, just for my benefit as being a, I like that term, rookie commissioner.
I didn't.
No, not you, not you, not you. I won't say the name of the person that used that term. But I am. So, but the question I have, it's related to the section, Section 13 and Section 14, right? And I'm recalling this because I remember attending a city council workshop, right? And in that workshop, I remember them saying, look, you know, most of the business should not be done under Section 14. And so from the veterans, right, it should be done under Section 13, but from the veterans who sit here, can you give me rationale why so often we use Section 14? And it was a question that was asked by a gentleman at our last city commission meeting, and I meant to come back and ask that, but it just slipped my mind. I'm getting older now. We had that conversation.
Yes.
Right? So I just want some feedback from veteran commissioners about why that's the case, why we use emergency Section 14 so often as opposed to Section 13.
So I will answer that from my perspective. Mr. Waddington, you want to jump in? Mr. Hastings, Ms. Reader?
Who sets the agenda? I don't set it.
No, well, I mean, the reason, so, so new ordinances, new codified ordinances are always passed at two readings. And those are the really most important ones in a lot of ways, where we're changing the laws that apply within the city. The other ordinances and resolutions that we pass often have very close timelines, deadlines, whether it's a state application for a grant, whether it's we want to get a contract out in place because we've got the best bid, the lowest bid, we know who it is, let's get them to work. There's no particular reason for delay. We owe a bill to the state of Ohio or the EPA because we got to pay them, you know, for the fees for the water treatment plant and the sewer treatment plant. I mean, there are a lot of different reasons of these things, and they're each individual. But, you know, we've, we've had this, trust me, I've had this debate with staff early in my tenure, and I eventually said, oh, well, yeah, okay, now I understand. But I don't remember all those conversations. It was a long time ago. Mr. Hastings and Ms. Reader, Mr. Orzak, if you want to jump in, but generally, as my understanding is, you know, this is the pace of business, and it's more efficient and more cost-effective to do it the way that we do it. I don't think anybody's trying to hide anything.
Mr. Chairman. We used to get a lot of walk-ins, come to the meeting, sit in the chair, and hand you, we got a vault in this. Really? And how am I going to read all this? And we got, we eliminated that, I believe. I haven't seen that in a while. Remember how they'd walk something in?
I do.
That's tough to, how do you make a decision when you have any bread, nothing on, and the meeting's starting now?
Anything else on that subject? Or any other subject of old business? If not, then we'll turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to speak to items of city business, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and bear in mind, your comments are limited to five minutes, please.
My name is Chris Tulipan. I live at 1317 Winnebago Avenue. And Winnebago Avenue is my backyard, buts up to the backyard of the city complex. Okay? You with me so far? All right, good. We have called, at the city complex, for years, there has been a trailer and a boat sitting, sitting there. Now, we have stacks full of old tires, we have garbage cans, we have dumpsters. This is what we look at when we get up in the morning. And we have called the city, and the one lady told us, just deal with it, sir. That's what she told me, just deal with it. So we've called other, we've called a lot of people, and nobody does anything. Somebody told us the boat can't be moved because they have to take the gas tank out. Well, take the darn gas tank out and get rid of the boat, you know? I mean, that's what, I mean, it, we've lived there 52 years, never had mice. We now have mice in our garage. They have garbage, those blue cans, you know, the, like, they pick up, you know, the garbage. There must be 10 blue cans. Tires are stacked up, they're all over. If anybody would like to see a picture, would anybody like to see a picture of this?
Do you have one with you?
Yes, honey. Yeah.
Mr. Tulipan, you're referring to the facility on Cement Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I think that's called the service complex, isn't it, the city?
It is. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Show Mr. Murray. You're going to be in awe when you see what we wake up to every morning.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Well, I want you to continue while the commissioner.
Okay. Then, 7:00 in the morning, we have the front-end loaders, right? They're going in, and when they back up, they go boop, 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 right? So at 7:00 in the morning, we're listening to that. On top of that, at, in the afternoon and the night, when we're going to bed, there have to be over 100 seagulls on this roof, and they circle around and quack, 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 quack. We can't get any rest at this place. Now, we've been trying to be patient Sanduskians, okay? And trying to, you're our last hope. I'm begging you guys, please do something about this. Now, my wife came up with this, suggested and told somebody, and it didn't work, there's a railroad track that goes right there. They can take all that stuff and put it against the railroad track, and it won't bother anybody on Winnebago Avenue. Have many of you ever been on Winnebago Avenue? I'm going to tell you something, it's a quiet, everybody takes care of their houses, you can ask the chief, there's never any problem there. We've even had neighbor, neighborhood outings, you know, in the street. I mean, everybody gets along, everybody likes each other, and it's quiet. But now we got beep, 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 and we got seagulls, and we got, now, I complained about it to somebody that runs the service complex. I don't know his name or whatever. And so this was about four years ago. They went up there and took all the nests and the eggs and got rid of them somehow. So that stopped. Well, this year, they're all back, hundreds of them. And they just squawk all night long and beep, beep, beep with the front-end loaders and the mice now. I mean, I just want to live in peace, you know? You people are going to be our last hope because we've called everybody, you know? Who wants to come to a city commission meeting and bitch and moan, you know? I'm sorry, my language. We don't. We just wanted somebody to take care of it. But when somebody tells my wife, just deal with it, what are you going to do, you know?
Mr. Tulipan, I'm confident that our city manager is going to follow up on this, and I thank you.
That you?
Yes, sir. I thank you for bringing this to our attention. I'm not certain what we can do, but I know that he is a proponent of great public service, great service in general, customer service. And if you were told to deal with it, that would be wrong. None of us were present for that conversation.
Of course, no, no, that was on the phone.
And I'm not doubting what you say. But I thank you, and I have empathy for your position, and let's see what we can do now that it has everyone's attention.
I hope so. If nothing happens, I guess I'll have to come back and complain some more. I don't want to, but I.
I hope you don't come back, but I think you are fully capable of coming back if you need to.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you for your attention, people.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm wondering if, relative to Mr. Tulipan's suggestions, I don't know how, how it would be to try to move all that stuff over along the railroad there, but to at least put something in the fence so we could shield it so we wouldn't have to look at that.
I built a fence already. I built a fence in my backyard.
Oh, okay. We're on.
No, I.
We're not going to do this where we debate.
I just, just a suggestion. I'm sure Mr. Klein and Mr. Orzak will figure it out.
I'm sorry, Dana.
It's okay. No, I'm just trying to keep.
I've never done this before.
It's okay.
I'm a virgin at the commission.
I hope you're not a blushing bride, too.
Jennifer Ashburn, 2112 Parkview Boulevard. Something that I wasn't going to address before I got here and heard about, Mr. Klein, that you're doing the sewers in MacArthur Park? I'm glad because I just paid $1,000 to get mine, the toilets unplugged in mine. But my question is, do the residents have to move? What should I tell the tenants, the tenants that I have there?
So we don't usually put the staff up to answering questions at a commission meeting. So, but, but please, your points, we'll follow up with you, and I think Mr. Klein did answer that question in his comments earlier, which is that, you know, they're going to, we're going to work with the residents to make the changes. They don't need to move out.
Oh, that was my big, that was my concern because they don't have any place to go. I mean, that's why they're in MacArthur Park, because they don't have any place else to go. Okay, this is why I came. I'm a retired school teacher with 35 years of experience. I have a master's in administration and a master's in reading. I was born and raised in Sandusky, and I graduated from Sandusky High. I recently attended a national conference and learned that the same serious problem we have in Sandusky is a problem being experienced nationwide, and that problem is literacy. Our children can't read. Before I knew the magnitude of the literacy problem nationwide, I recognized it while substituting in Sandusky City Schools. And with the cooperation of the rec department, I started the reading/writing room at the rec. Volunteers flooded the room with books that the children can take home to build their own personal libraries and to foster the love of reading. Volunteers also came in to tutor the children so they could read the books that they take home. The eagerness of the volunteers and the urgency of the problem and our beautiful lakeshore prompted, and also the fact that on the national level, they have declared literacy as a civil right. And with that declaration, there are grants available to address, to address whatever cities are doing to combat the literacy problem. So, the urgency of the, the eagerness of the volunteers, the urgency of the problem, and our beautiful lakeshore prompted me to study how other cities address this literacy dilemma, and I came up with Literacy on the Lake, Sandusky Reads and Writes, a year-long celebration where literacy is celebrated by the whole city. I've developed a tentative outline, which I have shared with the Sandusky School Board, the Sandusky Library, and it has been endorsed by the NAACP on a local, state, and national level. While I was at the national convention, I explained to them what we were doing with the reading/writing room at the rec. And Randy Weingartner, who is the president of the AFT, wanted me to send him more information. And then I was, the Lang Foundation had commissioned me to work with Wes Moore when he came, and we did a thing, anyway. When I saw Wes Moore at the conference and I was explaining to him what we were doing, he wanted to help. What can we do to help him? What ideas do you have to promote literacy? So I started working on ideas. And I'll leave copies of, leave copies for the commission to review at your leisure along with my contact information. I am open to any and all suggestions to demonstrate to the nation that Sandusky Reads and Writes, come to Sandusky, enjoy literacy on our lake. Come to Sandusky, enjoy literacy on our lake. I'll leave it with the chief.
Thank you, Ms. Ashburn. Thank you for your initiative. Thank you. You look like you're our closer tonight.
Yeah, I'll try to keep it brief then. Tim Schwanger, three-six-two Sheffield Way, Sandusky. The gentleman that just appeared, he's, he's now left, but I would think that everybody would agree that his issue should not have gone as far as the city commission. So I don't know if we have a problem with, you know, lower staff, whoever's answering phones. I know that in the past, I've called a city department, a couple city departments, and the first three or four times I call, I get an answering machine. Okay, so it takes like five or six calls to get through with my issue. Do we need to recommend to people that if they have an issue in their neighborhood to go directly to an email to the city manager instead of trying to go through, you know, staff departments? I, maybe that's gonna be the answer to getting resolution to some of these issues. I, I don't know. I mean, that's pretty much what I have done now, is if I have an issue, I'll send an issue right to Mr. Orzak, and then he'll, you know, get somebody on it and, you know, take care of it. One of the most, one of the probably top three or four most important boards or commissions in the city of Sandusky is the Housing Appeals Board, and that's where code enforcement comes in, and we issue fines and, you know, waiver fines and things like that. But I find it very interesting that we do not have a city commission liaison on that committee, but we have a liaison on other, what I will call, lower-level or minor committees, tree commission, I think we have a commission liaison, rec board, we have a, a commission liaison. So please consider including the Housing Board of Appeals as an important committee that we need to put a city commission member on that. As far as the rec center, I gotta remind everybody, that levier, that property tax, passed by fifty votes, which tells me one thing, the public is concerned about what we're gonna get in the end. Okay? Jeff, you, you understand that? So when we get to talking about an outdoor water feature versus tennis courts, I would suggest that each and every city commissioner, when they leave here, look at how many people, just regular people are using the tennis courts outside of here. How many regular people, not, not schools, not leagues, are using the tennis courts at Sandusky High School right now or anywhere else in the city of Sandusky? Tennis for the public use has kinda gone by the wayside, just like bowling, okay? It's, you know, it's a dying sport. So if I had my drugs for a new rec center, I would want to make sure, and make, I mean, make sure that if we have to drop something out of that new rec center, it's, it's not an outdoor water feature, okay? We gotta drop the tennis courts, we gotta drop the garden, the fancy garden that they're proposing, let's drop that, but let's not drop a water feature. Now, we all talk about this budget that we are dedicated to, fourteen million, thirteen million, whatever it is. I can tell you, I know of at least one community, and the very first community that came up showed where they are actually using American Rescue Plan dollars to make up for their deficit on what they wanted to spend on a rec center. Now, I don't know if we have all of our Rescue Plan money, dollars dedicated, I know it's not all spent. Maybe take a look at where the proposed spending is at and prioritize, okay? If we're falling short on a rec center, maybe we need to reallocate some of those funds and make up that funding gap if there is one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Two, two points of fact that I'll, I'll note. One, the tennis courts are being in the main funded by the schools, not by the city, we're contributing to that, but we're not funding the majority of that. The other point I would note is that, my understanding is that the ARPA money needs to be committed, that is, under contract by the end of this year, and so that ship has probably sailed in terms of spending for the rec center, cuz we still have to develop a plan, and then we have to go out to bid after we develop a plan, so.
Yeah.
A little ways out yet. Are there, anyone else wishing to address the city commission? If not, then the chair will entertain a motion to convene, not convene.
To a turn?
Yes.
So move second.